Mr. President, the meeting of Napa Sosa City Council is called in order on Monday, 25th day of March in the Council Chamber. Let's record and show all council members present. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cell phones in the silent mode and a reminder to visitors, please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please stop the phone down in back, expect your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's indication will be led by Pastor TJ Green, first Pastor Church, then all other places.
Lord, spring. Hey, Lord, we come to you tonight so grateful during this week as we celebrate the Passion Week. We celebrate Jesus rising from the grave. He gave us life and He gave us hope. What would we come to you tonight? We lay this city council at your feet. We ask for wisdom. We ask for knowledge. We ask for direction for this city, for this area, for this whole place, Lord, that you would be magnified and our city would be blessed. I ask God that you give them patience and endurance in difficult times when difficult decisions need to be made. So what we lift that up to you right now, we ask you to do a work that only you can do. And we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one freedom, indivisible.
I have three remarks of visitors we have. First, we have Lucy Yavera with the Mexico Grimes County Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, guys. So, good evening. First of all, sorry for dressing so casually. It's been a wild day of rain in all kinds of downtown Navasota. So, a couple of things I want to inform the city and the council about, as we have a couple of events coming up that I think are very important to downtown city and our retailers, which is Groovy Grapes, which is this Saturday. So, it's our annual Wine Walk. You have a nice, pretty calendar. Thank you, Vanna White. All the girls named Patty should do a great job. So, or fly into that. So, our event this year is going to look a little differently. We have thirteen different vendors, and in the past, what we've typically done is we've invited wine vendors only. So, we typically cater to our wine vendors in this region. This year, we did a little different. We invited our Grimes County wineries first, so we always want to feature our local vineyards and our local wineries first, our local businesses. But we also invited several of our bar service, so our Sutton Stars and Rush Hour Bartending, some of those local smaller bar and event services. We invited them to be a vendor and be a part of the Wine Walk. And we also asked that our railroad street vendors, so P.A. Smith or Hayner Speakeasy and Rail and Rye and the Navasota Examiner, will also be serving alcohol and, you could just say, participating in the Wine Walk. Two reasons that we did that is we want to show that Grimes County is diverse in what we offer, so we don't offer just Texas and locally grown wines. We also offer different services that can transpose from this to something else, so another event. We're always trying to think outside the box of the chamber, stretch what our businesses do. Something else that you have that I wanted to make sure you knew about was our new map. So, this is our county map. Patty, thank you. I appreciate your assistance. So, this is our county map. So, one of the things that we did, starting last year, is we completely revamped the map itself to only feature Grimes County businesses and visually it only has Grimes County pictures. So, anything you see on the right either comes from downtown, the blue dots are actually from the side of Highway Six. Thank you, text off, not moving them down. But, so we try to keep that again focused on Grimes County. So, something that we're really, really trying to push very hard and that we would ask, yes, you have the whole map, you have Navasota right there. So, we ask that if you guys want to feature those in your shops and in your offices, if you want to have them in your new welcome packets, we, our title companies here in town also feature them. So, everybody that moves into town gets a directory with our businesses and also gets that map as well. So, again, just if they don't know where it's at, we're going to put it right in front of their face, just to make sure. If anything, we stalk everybody down to make sure they know. And our last thing, I know I'm very limited, is our next coffee with the chamber is April 10th, and we have some big, big updates to offer everybody. And that is actually going to be hosted at Classic Rock Cafe, so right down the street. Again, we invite everyone to come to our coffees because those are where we push our biggest updates, and that's where you get the latest news. And we have three major updates to push out there. So, some really big things the chamber is going to be doing. And one of them, just to leak a little bit of it, is going to be bringing in about twenty different newspapers for a regional that may. So, very, very big things that we're doing at the chamber, but definitely want to get those on your radar. So, thank you very much for your time.
And tell your relatives.
Good evening. This is my father, Antonio Moreno. I am his daughter. I'm his interpreter tonight, Anna Contreras.
What's the name of the chair?
She have hour point or something she wants to show?
Okay, well, we have a three minute rule, so.
Yeah, it's okay. We understand.
Station, address, that is.
Okay. Dad has resided in Navasota for over twenty years and lived in his property for the last twenty years. I am the business owner of Classic here so long in Navasota. My husband is Christian Contreras, right here. We are here tonight to speak in behalf of my parents about the present situation that he is facing at his home area. On that first, this picture shows the flood, the flood of my parents indicating water into the home, water from the drainage ditch in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. A text by author, next, please.
Do you not stay with the address of the house?
Yes, please.
Yes, his address is 1802 Carter Street in Navasota. And that is the front of his house where the indicated water into the home, water from the drainage ditch in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. A text by author, Michelle Walker, explains how a highly probable threat danger that flows can cause a major threat in our case to civilians who reside in this toxic location. Next, please. Contaminated water from upstream floods the neighborhood into the ditches overflowed into property and homes. Extending water probably a source of eco bacteria are transported from pastures. This flooding impacts bacteria directly into the water body. Next, please. As the Google Earth picture displays with a reddish line, the lake inside a pasture containing livestock flows water coming into a bacteria zone neighborhood and self paths the area towards Highway Six bypass. A bacteria is a link that occurs along the edges of river, rivers, streams, lakes, and other water bodies. Next, please. When manure is deposited into the pastures, a significant source of bacterial contamination in the drainage ditch. Progressive distribution of antibiotic resistance caused by the bacteria responsible for failure even in effectiveness of antibiotic threat infections caused by animal or human pathogens. Manure is an established hotspot of bacteria that harbors they are. Next, please. Humans can be exposed to pathogens from poorly managed animal feces, particularly in communities where animals live in a close proximity to humans. Exposure to animal feces can be, has been associated with diarrhea, soil transmitted, dogmeal infections, trachoma, environmental and digestive dysfunction, and growth faltering. Approximately one-third of deaths among children under five are due to diarrhea and the global burden of disease. Twenty fifteen report are attributed to pathogens that can be found in the animal feces. Next, please. We request, we request the drainage ditch to be cleaned on a regular basis due to exposure for identification. Just please clean our ditches. Next, please. The threat is highly probable, as you can see in the upcoming pictures. Children's are under danger. Next, please. Small causes can have large effects like flooding. Next, please. Viruses, adenovirus, astrovirus, hepatitis C virus, rotavirus. It is important to gain insight into the routes by which humans are exposed to animal feces to design efforts to interrupt these pathways and reduce subsequent human health impacts. My parents have over twenty grand kids, and we are seriously worried for them since we visit this location very often. And are, we are concerned about their health, and not just for our children, but for everybody else's kids and families in this neighborhood. We need a lot of your children are bred through the brain in this slide after the flood. Next, please. The reference of the researchers that we did. Next, please. Thank you to the city council. God bless you, and God bless us, Texas.
My name is Maggie Hill, father of eighty-three, foot nine lady, in McCombs Lakes. This is Alexander Rogers. I'm new out here, but we've been here about six months, and we're in McCombs Lakes also. The thing that we're going to discuss with these gentlemen is in our subdivision, there are no speed limit signs. We have people running through there forty, thirty-five, forty mile an hour. We have children playing in the streets. We have people walking in the streets, and someone is going to get hurt. Well, I'm asking you to set a speed limit sign. I talked to the city manager, Jason, but I didn't get any good feedback from him on what we could do. I'm suggesting that there be a twenty mile an hour speed limit sign in that subdivision due to the fact of the small children. If one of them gets hit and you have not put the speed sign up in there, you board members are responsible for the injuries of that child because it's your job to make sure our neighborhoods are safe. We can't ask the police to live there. They patrol it enough, but we can't ask them to stand the subdivision twenty-four seven, protect us. They have other people within the city limits to protect. Also, y'all notice there that on the back two pages, congested streets. There's no way on the last page, there's no way a fire apparatus or an emergency vehicle could get between them cars. They would have to turn around and try to find a way to get to whoever they were getting. We're suggesting, tell them about your, uh, tell them about your, well, just the other day, we were driving down.
Say your name and address.
Oh, looks like it. Yeah, it's Alexander Rogers.
Address.
Twenty twenty-six Eagle B Drive. And, but we were driving down Masters, and I was surprised. There were so many trucks parked on both sides of the road. I have a small SUV, Toyota, and I could barely, with about this much space on each side, get through that street to get out of the subdivision. So, that surprised me, and I thought that what we've been thinking is maybe having a no parking zone on one side of the street so that this doesn't happen in the neighborhood, because no emergency vehicle could have gotten down that street. That's, you know, that's the, you know, the issue of the street, the speed limit sign, the small kids, especially when you come in and you make the left turn on Masters Yard. Down the road there, at the stop sign, when you turn left again, you go down that street. There's a bunch, there's five or six kids who play right there on that corner. That's Eagle B Drive. And you go to your driver, and they're out in the street constantly fighting. Well, it's like I say, we have the elderly and other people. There's four hundred and seventy people in our subdivision, and they're adding daily to houses in there. So, you've got a good tax base there, ladies and gentlemen. Guys, they also, if we could just say one thing, if we could put some lighting in the entrances to both, both entrances into the subdivision, we'd pass it up. At night, you can't see, you cannot see where it's going. I think it's very dangerous, but we can't see there. So, if you could do that and maybe fix that street that goes into the subdivision, because it's, it's pretty bad. So, you know.
It'll be turned over to staff.
Yeah, Jason said that you were supposed to pave it sometime in November. Pay the, what's that street called? By the airport.
By the airport.
It's really bad. Yeah. It's hard to get out on the Highway one oh five. Jason said you were, you're going to add sketches for blacktopping in November. I hope you give it, and you live up to that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, one more quick comment. I'm an ex truck driver, and I noticed that you've got trucks, signs almost everywhere, but there still are trucks, including cement trucks. Now, they're classified as a Class A vehicle, and they're over thirty-five thousand pounds. They shouldn't be allowed to come through the city. They should be blocked like all the others. If I was a truck driver and you stopped me and I seen that, I seen that truck went through there, and you arrested me, you would find me suing you, or you wouldn't go to rest because you're allowing other commercial vehicles to drive through the city, and I could have not. Okay. So, you need to take that into consideration. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, we will have staff follow up with both of the citizens.
Our board's staff report.
Mayor and council, I'm going to have our A Card Director, Maggie Johnson, come up and introduce some of our members.
Maggie Johnson, human resources director to Mamela and the council members and other members here. President, tonight I would like to introduce our two employees, our two most employees with the city of Navasota. First, I would like to call up Jesus Santillon. He is, he was hired on with the city of Navasota February the nineteenth of this year as a court and facility maintenance laborer here in our public works department. Mr. Santillon is a native of Navasota, graduated from the Navasota High School in May of two thousand and twenty-one. After graduation, he began his work experience with, at the summit, precast cement company and has years of experience working with cement. Recently, he became a father. His hobbies are fishing, watching sports, and playing video games. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his family. So, tonight we have the best, uh, they just sent him in. Next is, I'd like to introduce Taylor Hughes. She's our newest employee. Today is her very first day of employment with the city of Navasota, and she's hired on as our marketing communications manager and PIO. She has over six years of experience defining brand messaging and leading campaign for local organizations. Ms. Hughes is a two thousand eighteen graduate, graduate of Texas A&amp;M University, earning a bachelor's of science degree in agricultural communications and journalism. She has been served, serving as the manager of the marketing and communications for the Bryant and College Station Chambers of Commerce, where she had worked for five years. Ms. Hughes is a Navasota native, and is married to Lucas Hughes, which is co-owner of Only One Rental and the daughter of Kevin and Teresa Clark. We're excited to have a local talent, talented person interested in serving our community and organization. If you please help me join in with me to welcome Mrs. Taylor.
John McKay provides an update on all of our CIP projects.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. John McKay, president here here. So, first off, I want to say today we bid the water well. Me and Carrie are looking at, we did get, received four, four bidders were interested, showed up to bid. So, that's some good news. Later in this week, we'll also be bidding the water tower. So, both those are coming along pretty quick. Excuse me. The big CIP project, the one that we're all here, we'd like to hear about. So, we have the special contractors I've been talking about for a while now. They are coming tomorrow. They were scheduled for today, this morning's arrangements. We pushed them off for one day. Even without those, staffs kept working. We made fourteen out of forty-one water tines in that area, but that's how many that, that's the scale that we're dealing with. There's forty-one times we have to cut into the old system connected to this new. We're about, there is, these valves that we're putting in tomorrow should help us out quite a bit getting the rest of it there. They're putting in four tomorrow is how many they're putting in. The paving work, I'm sure y'all seen the curb, and we call it flat work, you know, gutters, stuff like that is beginning. As you wanted to say, we're going to get a general Facebook post out there. You're going to start seeing, we call them concrete aprons, but y'all know how, you'll see the little concrete part at the intersections that catches the valley gutter. It's really there for, that's where people tend to crank their wheels, turn. Asphalt doesn't really like being turned on. It likes things going straight through them. So, a lot of these were identified. There were thirty-two in the project, actually I counted them, that were identified. They're starting to install those this week, starting at Orlock and, Orlock and Water Street. So, Orlock and Kettering, I'm sorry. The, you'll start to see some of those. It will be road closed when that happens to traffic, not to through traffic, but it won't hinder anyone further than having to go block out of the way until that concrete sets up. That usually, from closing, digging on it to set up, we're looking at probably about two weeks each time, just to keep that in mind. Those are really all the big updates that I have, unless y'all have any questions for me.
Those aprons, you call them aprons?
Aprons.
That's like the last step before the paving, I guess.
Yes, so the last step is still getting, there's a few water tines we're still chasing. Felder and Judson, we're still chasing. These valves are to help specifically with the Judson and Washington tine. At that point, there'll be two, two streets. I guess there's one other valve, it's Neil and Judson on the north side. Once those three tines are done, we'll have Neil and we'll have Judson. That can be when you see the paving crews start coming in. Everything goes well tomorrow, you're looking at probably about four weeks, and they do go fast once they get here. That's why they try to get a couple of streets in front of them. So, you can, you can redo these paving a lot faster. You can do this piecemeal dirt work we're having to do, so they try to get all that done in front.
I have a question. I don't know if it's the CIP project, but Hillside and Washington, there's two barrels in the middle of the road.
That's, that valve, yeah. Is that going to be, is that going to be fixed? Because the people turning off of Washington onto Hillside, they're, I don't know if it was yesterday I was over there, it's like a four, four, five inch drop, maybe seven, eight inch drop, so like the car like. We'll work on that. We'll definitely make sure that that, that does happen. It needs to be fixed. It is a valve that we're on quite a bit right now, and it is one of those old nineteen thirty valves. That valve isolates east and west on Washington, and that's actually a pretty major player. That's why you saw us have to dig it up to access it. There's a new valve going in on Miller Street right there as well. I noticed today they had their equipment staged to dig that hole for tomorrow morning first thing. So, but that, that really is a key area that we're on almost daily and will be until we get a couple more of these tines done. So, bye-bye. We will address that.
And what's going on on Farquhar Street?
Farquhar?
Yes.
That's the sewer that's going in. They're relaying in the sewer between T and Johnson Street. That was still old clay pipe, probably put in when the street was put in. The, they're replacing that. It's going slower than it was, than you saw it on some of the other streets. That's mostly because it's so deep right there. Farquhar's a flat street, and sewer has to go downhill. So, if you don't have a hill to follow, your sewer just gets deeper and deeper and deeper. T gets what, like?
Thirteen, fourteen foot deep?
Gets deep. It takes a while to dig down those trenches that deep safely for the workers. So, they're doing that now. They'll be coming back up again with water once they're done. They're doing water from, I think, Gibbs, somewhere in that area up to Johnson.
Thank you. We have a couple of proclamation this evening. We have, first, it's April, it's Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Anyone here to join me, please come on up. Whereas, over two hundred thousand children in Texas are reported as abused or neglected every year. Child abuse prevention is a community responsibility, and finding solutions depends on education and involvement among all people. Whereas, communities must make a, make every effort to promote programs that benefit children and their families. Whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, and law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, all those residing in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping the parents raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. Now, therefore, it being proclaimed that I, Mayor Miller, mayor of Navasota, do hereby recognize April twenty twenty-four as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Navasota, Grimes County, Texas. We urge all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse and neglect significantly in years to come. We'll get a picture.
I do just want, can I just?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Miller, Mayor Miller, and council members. I'm here on behalf of the Grimes County Child Welfare Board to request a proclamation to issue recognizing the month of April twenty twenty-four as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. We would also like to invite all citizens to join us in a multi-agency awareness program to be held April the third at noon on the steps of Grimes County Justice and Business Center located at two seventy FM one forty-nine, West Anderson, Texas. Remember that every child deserves a happy and safe environment in which to grow, and that you never stand so tall as when you kneel to help a child.
Ready, set, library. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are on life journey. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of communities, developing and expanding collections. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of communities developing, expanding collections, programs, and services that are diverse as the populations they serve. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and jobs, support and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. Libraries make choices that are good for the environment and make sense economically, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. The treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both fiscal and digital resources for present and future generations. They are essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies working to improve society, protect the rights of education and literacy, and promote free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, libraries and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, being resolved that I, Burt Miller, Mayor of Napa Sosa, do proclaim National Library Week as April seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their local library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library.
Good evening, City Mayor's Library Director. So for Library Week, we've planned some special activities. So starting Monday, April eighth, you can help support library programs by purchasing a Little Caesar's Peppa Kit. We'll go live on our Facebook page with the link that day. And we're encouraging everybody, please share it because you all have to be local to order. They actually ship to you, so share it with anybody you know. Tuesday, we're encouraging everyone to come and visit our new free little library out front. So if you have books you'd like to bring and donate, please bring them. If you'd like to take a book and read outside, come and join us. On Wednesday, April tenth, we are asking everyone to create a bookmark and upload it to Facebook and tag the Navasota Public Library or Instagram or whatever your social media platform is. I'm a child of the, the nineties, so Facebook is mine. On Thursday, we're encouraging everyone to come shop our stuff bags. So we're going to do a flash sale that day, so we'll give you a grocery bag and any books you can stuff in it are five dollars that day to the bag. All that, those proceeds go to our summer reading program, which is coming up. So come and help us support our kiddos. And then on Friday, we're going to do a Love My Library Storytime at ten AM. So bring the kids out and we'll do a story time. We'll have a book. We'll do snacks. We do crafts. We get silly. It's a lot of fun. So please come out and support the library that week. Thank you.
Fifty so far. Any reports from the council or boards and commissioners?
Yes, the planning and zoning met on March the fourteenth. They had several agenda items. One was to conduct a public hearing and authorize a replat application for five oh five to Rosy. And that was approved. And there was also a public hearing and consideration to replats not to Victoria Avenue, and that was approved. And then I believe coming up on one of our agenda items was the possible action, amending Chapter Ten Subdivision Regulation, Article ten point zero two. And they approved that with, with a condition, but I don't remember what the condition was.
Yeah, with amendments, yeah.
And that was in, and that was approved.
You could just come up tomorrow, Special Olympics Annual Meet at Navasota ISB, a rather stately, will kick off about nine o'clock and runs till noon. Lots of volunteers, including a lot of the city staff are also coming up to, for that. Volunteer and then we also encourage anyone that's, if you're available, just to come out and sit in the stands and cheer on the athletes. They would love to have you there to do that. There's a number of different districts that are coming to visit our communities. So we'll allow and welcome that for them and give these, give these kiddos some cheer, some cheers. Also tomorrow, the Sky Warden will be taking place from six to eight PM. And there is pre-registration required on that. You could probably tell me if there's any spots left.
We have about forty people registered, so we'll at least have room if anyone wants to register.
OEM at Navasota TX dot gov would be where you send an email if you're interested in attending that. It's being led by the National Weather Service and it's the Sky Warden program. So if you're interested in that, please drop an email. Kristen will be the one that answer you on that. Also tomorrow is the registration day for the next GED program, which will be at the Navasota Center. It's at six o'clock. You can just show up for that. You don't have to call or email, but you can be registered tomorrow at six at the Navasota Center. Then Friday is the Easter Egg Hunt that is hosted in part by Living and Trinal and the City of Navasota. It'll be at August fourth, starting at noon in that's old Friday, this Good Friday. Then you told earlier about the Green Berets Wine Hall is coming up Saturday, that's from two to six. Coming up April second is an opportunity to meet the new athletic director, Trey Allen, at the baseball field, starting at four thirty. They'll have different games going on throughout the evening. An opportunity to meet the new athletic director at the Navasota ISB. On the fifth is Relay for Life at Brandy Field, that starts at six thirty. Also on the fifth is the Blood Drive at First United Methodist Church, put on by American Red Cross. They have a time change, they do it at ten thirty to four thirty, which you can make your appointment online at redcrossblood.org. And the Navasota one will be listed that you can register for. Battle Sessions with Navasota ISB are coming up for the upcoming Bond Vote. Two, the next two, well, one actually, not in Michigan, but there's two more coming up. The next one is on April the eighth at the VFW and on the sixteenth of April at the Navasota Center. Two more opportunities to get information and ask questions about the bonds being proposed. And just a little bit more on the way, we've got our next Navasota Citizen University. Need to get registered by the sixteenth of April. I think we already have some interest in that, so we're already supposed to get, looking at signing up for that. And then later in April, on the twenty-seventh, is the Annual Trash Off. About the City of Navasota, from eight to noon. I meet the Navasota Center and we have groups, different organizations, individuals, businesses. Everybody, anybody come out for the trash off on the twenty-seventh.
Just a reminder that this Friday, in accordance with Good Friday, all non-public safety offices will be closed to the public. And the library released their April calendar with a lot of different programs that are coming up and including the April Farmer's Market, which I believe is April fifteenth, great market. So please come and check it out. And other than that, we covered everything.
I'm number five. Consideration possible action on the near local cooperation contract for failure to appear program with Texas Department of Public Safety.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is a renewal of an agreement that courts of most cities have with the Texas Department of Public Safety regarding failure to appear. Changes were made during the eighty-eight State of Texas Legislative Session and to comply, the DPS has revised their current failure to appear contract that the City of Navasota has with them. Changes briefly or just language and restructuring of the original interlocal agreement, cooperation contract to provide clarity regarding the specific responsibilities held by each party. Number two is inclusion of indigency into the program as mandated by the state of Texas by House Bill two ninety-one of the eighty-eighth Legislative Session. Number three, language to account for future changes to the current statute of either federal or state ensuring that the ICC remains in compliance with the latest legal requirements until revised ICC is available. Texas Department of Public Safety states that it is imperative that all participants in the failure to appear program adhere to the updated terms to ensure its continued effectiveness. And therefore, staff recommends that you approve of this new agreement. It has been reviewed by our legal counsel and they recommend approving.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve the near local cooperation contract for the FTA program. Second, I'd like to remember, Mr. Holt, second, Mr. Gessler, to approve the near local cooperation contract for the FTA program with Texas DPS. Any further discussion? Don't let her say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no, Madam. Thank you, Judge. I'm the sixth, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of routine public comment and testimony regarding amendment of Chapter Ten Subdivision Regulation, Article ten point zero two, subdivision ordinance, exhibit ten A, subdivision development, Article seven, requirements for improvements, reservations, and design related to streets, utility location standards in cluster mailbox areas, mailbox areas, code ordinances sitting in Navasota, Grimes County. Consideration possible action on the first reading of ordinance ten forty-one dash twenty-four, amending Chapter Ten Subdivision Regulation, Article ten point zero two, subdivision ordinance, exhibit ten A, subdivision development, Article seven, requirements for improvements, reservations, and design related to streets, utility location standard in cluster mailbox areas, code order. You shouldn't have read that part. Anyway, that, you're on.
May I open the public hearing?
Yeah, we'll open the hearing at six forty-five.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. I'm with A. N. S. I. of Development Services. I'm just going to give you a quick, brief overview of the amendments. Over the last several months, city staff has been collecting a list of amendments in the chapter ten subdivision regulations. These include trash receptacles, utility service line locations. And lastly, probably the biggest one is requiring rigid or concrete streets on new development. As Councilmember Holt's mentioned, planning and zoning did meet and they recommended approval of these amendments that are attached in your ordinance. There was one change, and that was on the language regarding rigid or concrete streets. So that is section two of the attached ordinance. Previously, we had language that, that basically said adequate provisions shall be made. And so they wanted to just kind of close that a little bit more, make it more defined. And so we said adequate provisions in accordance with the Universal Design Guidelines. So that there's no room for gray and we're covered there. And again, the other one was the making trash receptacles optional in new subdivision, cluster mailbox area. And utility, utility lines or dislocations. And we did work closely with legal counsel on this amendment and everything passed muster hopefully, okay?
That's correct. So if we were to change and say that trash receptacles are encouraged but not required and the design of the new subdivision was such that a trash truck could not get to a location to pick up trash, could we still include that some sort of pad or something must be in the design? But not necessarily that it has to be used today, but that if we go back and say, okay, well, fifteen years from now, and it makes better sense that we have trash pickup at a mailbox cluster?
Yeah, I think so. And I think that's kind of already inherent with the requirement that a cluster mailbox area has to allow for two off-street cars. So there's always, it's gonna, it's almost inherently going to happen that you're going to have a concrete drive that would have access to a poly cart. Most, I'd say most poly carts that are going to be in subdivisions or trash receptacles are going to be smaller. They're not going to be the large, you know, front loaders that you see in the Republic. So I think just by the nature of our ordinance requiring two cars off the street, that will create a drive that would, I guess, make it available for a poly cart to be there.
But if that was the wording, I just wondered if somebody could then play that against us. If it was clear and said, and said that it must, you must have it in your design in place where the trash receptacle could go.
Oh, just to, just to say a trash receptacle pad?
Yeah.
Yeah, a pad requirement?
Yeah, yeah. Because I'm thinking that we thought it was important to add that. And then now we're coming back just a few years later and saying, eh, it's not that important. But in five or ten years, if we come back and say, well, it is important, but we haven't justified or required people to plan for that, then we may be in battle back with, where do we play, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a direction the council wants to go. I think we could maybe add that amendment in the.
So what happened in Stone Ridge, we had the new subdivision and people were taking their trash out, or their trash, their mail. Taking their mail out and all the trash stuff would just fall on the ground and be picked up. And so we ended up having PNC decide or recommend that if you're going to do a cluster mailbox, that you then are required to have a trash can there so that, you know, your trash isn't going, you know, around the neighborhood. And so I suppose now that there's some issues up in Conway's, potentially with what was mostly mentioned.
Yeah, there was, we received feedback from Conway's and the new old sites end up crossing. Basically, it was turning into a situation where those trash receptacles are really a place for people to dump their trash out of their cars instead of mail. And so it was, it was leading to rodents and other things smell. And so it just, if you make it optional, if there's issues, you can remove them. If there's no issues, you can keep them, but just not a hard line requirement.
Yeah, so I would still like to see us have some requirements, at least plan for them. That way, if somebody wants to do them, you know, it may be a matter of, you know, how do we get our mail differently down the road everywhere? I don't have any idea what that looks like, or how does, how do the trash trucks look? You know, there's some design change that'll come up that we would need to be thoughtful about today. So I'm okay with them being encouraged, just I think to plan for them would be important as well.
Got nothing? What was really cool was when people got a UPS package and they had their mail on the box and they just threw the whole box away. You could go and say, hey, Mr. Smith, don't burn your trash here. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Come here. This man.
Hi, Mayor, Council, Senator Richardson, Twobstone Lane Street. I don't live in one of those subdivisions, so I get my mail right, you know, the mailbox at my house. I'm just wondering, why are subdivisions using the cluster? Why can't they just have regular mailboxes? If it solves the problem. If it solves the problem, I can understand, maybe the developers don't, they wanna save money, but I just think if it just solved a whole lot, so.
If it's the post office.
Postal service.
Is it the postal says must.
Yeah. They don't wanna have to deliver that.
Is it a requirement or just a request?
Yes, it's a requirement.
Yes, thank you.
That's true. Not something we chose to do.
Councilmember Foltz, just a little interpretation about what kind of wording you're looking for? Are you thinking a, like, requiring a concrete pad, some sort of, what are your thoughts about, how detailed do you wanna get in terms of the requirement? What lengths would you like to see come back?
I just think that it would be appropriate for us to plan to have some sort of trash receptacle, so we didn't plan for that when we moved our mailbox cluster from the place that it was and we moved it west. And so after it was already designed and everything, we had to go back in and add concrete for a five, four-by-four section. So just to have planned for that would have been, we should have, someone should have said to us, hey, let's think about what happens when you build, when you need a bit of trash can there, because we didn't think about it. Now, ours is different than how Conway's worked, because Conway's actually had a poly cart, so the trash truck had to have access to that. We, that's not the way that we had it, so. But I don't know that a trash truck could have gotten into where our mailbox cluster is. So something just to think about, and maybe there's no change to the ordinance, but.
And who is it? Who maintains the cluster boxes at the HOA or is it the city?
It's the HOAs for each subdivision.
Do all of them have HOA?
The ones that have clusters, yes, with the exception of, no, actually, they do, yeah, because the cluster mailbox requirement came right at the time when we were getting a lot of new development. So generally, I think, yeah, yeah, I think they all have it.
And subdivisions in other communities, do they, have they addressed this trash can thing? Has this been something?
Uh, you know, I, you know, working for a city, you tend to notice things now when you drive around, and for whatever reason.
Just something I've never seen.
Yeah, for whatever reason, every time I'm in a new subdivision, I always look to the mailbox area compared to our standards. It's a mixed bag. Some cities have at least off-the-street parking. I haven't really seen a lot of cover, unless it's like a really high-end neighborhood, but most of the time, they're just on the edge of the curb.
But I think when we looked at that, when I was on P&amp;Z, I think, we had the city go out and look at other cities and what their mailbox requirements were, because I wanna say it was when we were looking at, in Doug Crossing, right? Is that about the time? Cause Doug Crossing was one of the first ones that was not really an HOA, but they were able to maintain it, and it was still kind of on the street versus off the street?
Yeah, that was the first that, that was when the post office changed their rules. So they put a cluster mailbox, they had to, spur of the moment, and they just put it on the edge of the curb, and then that triggered P&amp;Z to say, hey, if the mailbox, if UPS is gonna require, not UPS, but the post office is gonna require clusters, then we need to put some standards in place. And so our ordinance is, it takes bits and pieces of multiple cities to require.
I mean, I just don't, I just don't think that having a trash can there is ever gonna be a good idea. I just don't want, said here, and then, I mean, I've seen the apartment complexes, they have trash cans on the cluster, but they also have a maintenance person that is on-site all the time to clean that.
So I'm wondering, who actually has a trash can? Is it on a route?
Conway's is.
The city, I mean, the HOA has a trash service to have it picked up every week?
I'm assuming so, because it's always at the edge of the curb. I don't know who does it.
Because I'm just wondering.
Do you have a poly cart?
Conway's is a poly cart.
Yeah.
At Stone Ridge, it's not. It's a nice, it's a, actually, it looks like one of our trashcans downtown.
I mean, you check your mail, there's a lot of people that get a lot of junk, and they, for some reason, don't put it in their car.
Well, don't get me started on the post office.
It's not trash.
They took out their trash, I mean, that was the post office.
It's not trash.
And you have to go outside and, you know, not the ordinance.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all.
I don't wanna get hung up on that, I just, if we're gonna be forward-thinking and think about options down the road, I would just like us to be prepared versus allowing somebody to build one without the space to do it, and then they come back to us and go, well, we'll need a variance, because we can't do it.
Um, partners, three hundred Hope Street, Napa Seven. Aren't you kind of taking the cart for the horse, because when the developer builds out there, he's gonna, he's not gonna know whether or not the HOA's gonna want the trash can or not, so seems to me the pad that he's building out there for the mailboxes is going to be large enough to have a trash can.
Uh, it's not. I'm just saying, that's, that was my experience. We didn't, we didn't think that way.
But that was then, it isn't now, so.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, I just thought that that's, the pad's already gonna be built, and then later, there's gonna be a decision whether or not there's gonna be a pad, I mean, a trash can, so.
We'll close the hearing at six fifty-eight. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number ten forty-one dash twenty-four.
I'm I see.
On the first reading. Consideration possible on the first reading of ordinance ten forty-one dash twenty-four and interjecting ten subdivision regulation article ten point oh two subdivision ordinance extended ten A subdivision development article seven requirements for improvements, reservations, and design related to streets, utility location standards, and cluster mailbox areas of code ordinances. Have a motion, approval on the first reading by Mr. Foltz, second, Mr. Gessler. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm here. Out of seven, consideration possible on amendments of the interlokal agreement between City of Napa Sota and P.A. Smith Hotel LOC related to sidewalk improvements, green brushroom amount.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, again, good evening. To summarize the request, February fourteenth of twenty twenty-two, the City of Napa Sota entered into a development agreement with P.A. Smith Hotel LOC. Their construction of their private parking lot for their, to service their hotel is at the corner of South Tenth and Holling. Part of that requirement was from our zoning ordinance, since they were developing a hotel in partnership with them, having contractors mobilized on-site. At the time, we presented it as an opportunity to improve the sidewalks along that block of the street. The original development agreement was for eighty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that was for matching street tips, so your paper walkways, ornate lamps, and decorative planters. However, there was a, there was an omission and a mistake, frankly, on the drawings. They didn't specify what material was next to the paper walkway, so in the Sash Report, you see a picture of when it was finished, and, you know, we got the call, hey, concrete's poured, come and take a look, and we asked, where's the rest of the concrete? Cause it was just all there around the papers. And so the contractor, you know, very frankly said, well, the specified plans don't call out what material that is, so we just assume that it's there. And so obviously, we want, we want that to match the rest of the downtown, and so that means that you have to have sidewalk or concrete on both sides of that paper strip, and that's where the eighteen thousand dollar difference comes from. Subsequently, we anticipated there was gonna be cost increases, and so in this year's fiscal budget, we actually budgeted a hundred thousand in anticipation of some increase because of the additional concrete, and so now the final request came in at a hundred thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents. So it is slightly lower budget by eighty-eighty-nine, but, you know, truly, it's eighteen over the original agreement, however, we just felt that it was important to match the aesthetics of the rest of the downtown, and, yeah, if I have any questions, not sure, Mr. Oh, there it is, is there? So if I have any questions myself, or Mr. P. can answer?
So you're saying that it was on the city thought that, did that, we'd plan this good?
Well, I mean, the, you know, the designing engineer, jury that, he didn't, he didn't specify what material it was. The city did review it, and it wasn't, you know, that wasn't brought up during the review process, so, you know, I guess you could, you know, you could argue both, I guess, in a sense, but the main thing is, is that it wasn't called out, and so the contractor, of course, they only build what's on the drawings, and so they did just that. It wasn't included as concrete, so they just left it as there.
This already been worked out, agreed to, Mr. Chief? Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the amendment, development agreement with City of Napa Sota and P.A. Smith Hotel related to sidewalk improvements, green brushroom amount.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Foltz, second, Mr. Peterson, to approve the amendment of the development agreement between City of Napa Sota and P.A. Smith Hotel LOC related to sidewalk improvements, green brushroom amount. Need further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm here.
Just how easy it is to forget.
Out of eight, consideration possible on Resolution seven sixty-two dash twenty-four, approving and authorizing execution of advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for a transportation alternative set aside project for FM thirty-nine and Black Forest Street by pedestrian routes.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, late in October last year, the city was notified that we received a grant for a little over, close to five hundred and eighty dollars for sidewalks along both sides of FM thirty-nine and Piedmont Road. In advance of that project being designed and ultimately constructed, the city has to enter, has to enter into an advanced funding agreement with Tech Stop. The grant that the city was awarded does cover the project a hundred percent, design and construction, however, they like to have this agreement in advance, basically saying if there's any cost overruns, it gets on the city. We don't anticipate that'll be the case. Actually, some conversations that we had with Tech Stop earlier this year, it anticipates that maybe the scope's gonna have to change a bit, and so it'll for sure be less than the cost, or at least that's, that's the plan. But again, this, this was originally by legal counsel as well, or any discrepancies in the, in the contract.
So just to hear you again, you said it will for sure be less than what the actual possibility?
Well, I guess, I guess in the quoted amount, with cost of construction, you know, that, that continues to go up, so there's, there's no telling, but, but the idea is you're gonna say under budget or at budget, similar to the Brozick project.
And just out of curiosity, I haven't really seen what this really looks like, just thinking about thirty-nine and six-foot sidewalks on both sides, all the way down?
Yeah, so it starts at Royal Road Street, where the Trumps, uh, Rover Crossing is, from there, all the way to Highway six feeder of thirty-nine.
So what happens to those, just think about the people that live in Victoria and Piedmont, and their fence is basically right there at that intersection? Then they lose their yard?
Victoria and Piedmont? Oh, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, I mean, and I think, and the reason I say that it could potentially come under budget is that, like, the kickoff meeting we had a few weeks ago, this whole time they've been operating under the assumption that it's a hundred-foot right-of-way, but I think it's gonna be a lot less than that, and so the scope may have to be changed, potentially, to be either only one sidewalk on one side, or maybe four-foot sidewalks instead of six-foot. Tech Stop's aren't gonna wanna, you know, try to acquire property or acquire a right-of-way, so they're gonna wanna stay in that right-of-way. So if it doesn't fit, you know, it may, it may change the scope entirely, but, you know, when these grants, when they're applied for you, you hope for the best, and you wanna get, you know, the best design possible, but then the reality on the ground is different once they get to survey and design, so.
I think it's a great idea, I just started thinking, man, that's a six-foot sidewalk into that neighborhood, that, those people's yard is, they won't be real happy with that.
You know, it won't, it protects the problem with going into these things, because it's not their yard, really, it's city driveway.
Yeah, whereas most of the time, they're not, it's not being, I mean, anyone.
Uh, it says that we're responsible for purchasing any necessary value we anticipated extra right-of-way we need. That'll change.
Yeah, we wouldn't recommend that, just because it would be on the, on the city, unless, you know, unless for whatever reason, council decided to go in that direction, but if we find out that the right-of-way line is not enough to do six-foot sidewalks, then we'll let Tech Stop, since they're designing it and constructing it, come up with a different solution that stays within the right-of-way.
If you didn't ask, you're going with.
Yeah.
Where these really people's yards.
And so none of it's really anticipated to be part of the roadway? Like, we wouldn't draw an extra thick line for bicycle lane on thirty-nine?
No, yeah, I think that, you know, mentions in here bicycle lanes, I think that's incorporated in the shoulder already, I would assume, but until we get that final design, there's, you know, depending on who the designers, that, that could change.
Is that not part of the check rail?
Yes, it is.
You put bicycles on the check rail?
Potentially.
Bicycles on Highway six, lady.
Doesn't sound like the smartest thing to do. Taking bicycles with trucks, that's just that part of it.
I want you to have to take, it belongs to the private department. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number seven sixty-two dash twenty-four.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gessler, second, Mr. Foltz, to approve the Resolution seven sixty-two dash twenty-four. Does that Resolution include that funding amount? It does? Okay, that's okay, we'll make sure. The, the agreement is attached, doesn't exist, so it is incorporated into the Resolution. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm here. Out of nine, consideration possible on Resolution seven sixty-three dash twenty-four, approving and just to maintenance screen from the State of Texas with the Texas Department of Transportation in City of Napa Sota, and authorizing the mayor to execute said municipal maintenance screen.
Mayor, Council, city staff received the request from Tech Stop to update the annual municipal maintenance agreement. Chapter three eleven of the Transportation Code gives to the City of Napa Sota exclusive dominion and control entrance station over and under the fellow streets and within its corporate limits. And so we have entrance to this agreement with the state to delineate where the responsibilities lie for the city and where they lie for the state. So this has also been reviewed by legal counsel. Don't have any questions.
Just a renewal of a. I'm going ahead.
Correct, yeah, the few minor changes, but nothing significant.
Yeah, the big thing was the, all the annexations, so city limits has changed. And so, they wanted to get that updated.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution seven sixty-three dash twenty-four.
Second.
Madam Foles, second. Madam Peterson, to approve resolution seven sixty-three dash twenty-four.
You're trying to mess with my, my, my problem? Only two to A, which is a map that would be, probably to resolve. They've got the listing down there in the bottom of what all of these roads are. And these are the roads that the city, that Texas is responsible for. And the city has a secondary responsibility. And most of them are easy to identify, it gets a little confusing sometimes, it's third by fifteen. But they've got orders, stay highway six. Say from the braxis coming to the water's down here line. And I don't think we're responsible for that, all of that thirteen miles. I don't know, but it might be, you know, we're at.
And we're putting in a really nice road out there.
So, so we'll change that to, say to the city limit line? Well, we're responsible for. Shady limits, shady limits, yeah. Right, I think they're pointing to the, the northern braxis kind of line down to the city limit portion on the south side. We'll make sure that's corrected.
Yeah, because the resolution says call for limits.
Correct.
They aren't very specific. You say that, that gives them a, yeah, make sure they acknowledge it.
I'm sorry, we, uh, I'll be two, six minutes, see you.
It wouldn't surprise me if they tried to slip something like that.
So Mayor, that motion, would they include, they completely, the change to exhibit?
We, yeah, would, yeah, would, that'd be, yeah, make the motion. Okay. That would be an amended motion to include that. And Patty, would you agree to that?
Yes.
Second amendment?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm curious.
Thank you.
No, you've got one more, no. Item ten, consideration of possible action on approval of first reading of ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-four, amending ordinance ten forty dash twenty-four, ordering special action on proposed amendments to the Homewood City Charter, City of Napa Southern, to be held by fourth, twenty twenty-four by assigning a letter of the alphabet to each proposition that corresponds to its order on the ballot.
Mayor and City Council, in two thousand seventeen, the state legislature, legislature made a change to election code, which states that local, local subdivisions can only assign a letter to a proposition. Members can only be assigned to propositions to be voted on statewide. And currently, we had members, when we first approved the first reading of the ordinance, that it was overshadowed on our court, so now we have to change it to a letter. And so, we are asking to approve this ordinance so that we can get it changed and get it correctly on the ballot. And then we'll have our second reading tomorrow at four P M.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the first reading of ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-four.
Second.
Motion, Madam Peterson, second. Madam Peterson, to approve on first reading, ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, one question. When, at the end of it, we go to the last two propositions and we ran out of letters in the alphabet. So I meant to A, A, I'm just wondering, in the normal sequence of things, if B, B is a correct sequence, or if we go to A, B?
It is according to Rachel, the much administrator, she approved it.
Okay. Yeah, I wouldn't, that was a good question, I would. All right. Any further discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm curious. Item eleven is the consent agenda, which includes minutes for the month of February twenty twenty-four, the fiscal report, February twenty twenty-four expenditures for February twenty twenty-four. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda. Motion, Madam Peterson, second. Madam Foles, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm curious. Item twelve, city council shall meet and take in session in accordance to its section five five one point zero seven one, Texas Government Code, in section five five one point zero eight seven, Texas Government Code, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel concerning legal matters related to certain industrial district agreements, and to discussion and delivery regarding certain industrial district agreements provided for the possible offer of a financial or other unincited to business prospects that the city seeks to have located, stay or expand in the city designated industrial district, and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations and associated matters. The time is seven eighteen. We convene in an open session at seven forty P M. And we'll have a visit on the agenda with each other.